Good evening and welcome to the January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. This is a public meeting. If any member of the public would like to make a comment on any item, there are several ways. If you are in Zoom, when the public comment period opens, use the raise your hand icon. You will be unmuted when it's your turn. If you're on your phone, you can also join the meeting and comment by pressing star nine. Again, you will be unmuted when it's your turn to speak. And if you're in attendance, you can approach the podium and make your comment. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. This meeting is now officially called to order, and we will begin with a land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling, in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. And Director Loyah, can we get a roll call, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Mayer?
Here.
Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Present.
Vice Chair Davies?
Here.
And Chair of the State Alcott?
Here. And at the staff's table, we have David Loyah, Director of Community Development, D. Lo Freitas, Senior Planner, and I see Joe Matier, Senior Planner. Anyone else that I need to introduce?
We also have, joining us for the second item tonight, Heather Iquinas, our consultant on the project.
Great, thank you. Oral communications, this time is provided for people to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda tonight. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements. Any requests that requires commission actions will be set by the commission for a future agenda or referred to staff. Is there any member of the public who has any oral communications on something not on tonight's agenda? Please step forward.
David, I just want to let you know, all the monitors are off up here on the dais. With an article, "America the Bland," hopefully you received that. Sometimes I don't see my, you know, my, what I've sent till like three months later, so I'm just checking in with you on that. I'd like to address what the fire department had said in a couple of meetings ago because, unless you're aware, tomorrow at eight thirty, the board, California Board is meeting in Long Beach as far as the ruling of finalization of the EIR for Cal Poly. So I've brought this up to city council a number of times. I was curious whether the city ever responded to that or whether they have no response at all. I mean, it would be nice to have some clarity there. I personally responded just from the standpoint of what the fire department presentation that unless there is some money coming up somewhere, that's, it's not a good idea to approve that and start construction on that site. That would be a huge liability to the city, not only the safety of the students and our first responders. So it'd be nice to hear something about that, but, you know, I don't seem to get any feedback from anybody as far as that issue. Scott, during the city council meeting, gave the annual report. I think one thing that I really agree with them was how important sea level rise is. And it's been over a year since we started this process. So I think it's time for us to address that by bringing in some experts. On the August twenty-third joint session, I think what came out of that from the standpoint of responsible growth, that was sort of shot down, that whole idea. And I think what came out of that was that you were totally supporting bringing experts in, so let's do that now. It's just been a long time, and I think a lot of things on your agenda for this year are tied to that. I don't know how you're going to approve your general plan, the coastal program, without getting an answer on that. So let's set up some dates for that. It would probably be efficient to bring the city council in along with that so that you didn't have to have two special meetings, just, I mean, that would be my suggestion. So let's start on a good note this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory.
This is the first page of the Gateway draft document. I've got ten copies to give to you. I regard, this says Gateway area at a glance, I regard this as a mission statement. I'd like you to review it in your leisure and see what items on this page we're accomplishing and which are still a ways away. It asks for equitable housing options for everyone regardless of economic standing, range of housing densities and types, including rental and owner occupied options, and there's a host of other items here which may be of interest to you. I'd like to, there's a mention of a table of non comporting items for the new draft plan. I'd like to know whether that table exists and when we're going to see it. The reason for it not being shown to us, I don't regard as valid. I think that one of the biggest non comporting items is a question of Transportation Safety Committee rejecting the L.K. Street cuthbert. The engagement report is now six months old. It's been described as a living document. It hasn't changed since it was issued. There's no executive summary, then still, of course, no compilation of the open house in January, which is now over one year ago. In, on the website, there is a Gateway Concerns and Solutions. It's what you worked on for three sessions back in October and November. There's a document, there's no title, no date, no page numbers, and it's marked as final. I don't think that this is final. It certainly doesn't have the list of experts that I believe you asked for. And in any case, I would believe that you would want to prioritize this list and schedule times for these items and figure out which ones are necessary or crucial and which ones are not. There's two items, I believe, that are missing. If you remember, there's an X here for planning. At one point, it wasn't clear what the X stood for, and David was erasing things that had the X and wasn't sure. So that's here, but it definitely should not be marked as complete. At the same, or final, rather, at the same time, we've been using the word as something reviewed. I would like to change that to reviewed and completed. We've reviewed all kinds of things, but not completed. Let's see. The, I've been going over two thousand twenty-two, looking back at my notes and transcripts of the meetings, just on a hodgepodge basis. When we were talking about how this would be done, the framework, that things would be presented to you, elements would be presented to you, and you go over them, and David would make notes. Judith requested that the notes come back the following week for strong reasons. I think you probably remember. I've seen at a committee level that the committee members were not happy with the notes that were taken. This can be worked out. The, I have some good news, I think, about the letters. This letter situation is terrible and actually against three different laws. I've had case studies on that, but I think it's going to improve. I've talked to Karen Dean, where we've come up with some good ideas, and I think it may be put into action in the next two or three weeks. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Is there anyone else that, is there anyone online, David, that would, has a public comment? No? Okay, so we're going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the commission and are enacted in one motion. We really only have one thing on our consent calendar, and that is the minutes from January tenth. Does anyone?
I'd like to pull that.
Okay. All right, well, that's it. So why are you pulling it? What issue do you have with that, Judith?
Same reasons as last week. I feel there's an uneven quality of detail on there, and it seems a bit odd to have staff summarize public comments at that level of detail with little to no summary or anything about either staff or commissioner discussions. So I'd like to request a uniform level of detail. I think if we've got that level of detail summarized for public comments, we really need to know what the commission is saying as well. And the solution that we had arrived at in the past is for that level of detail, either to make it consistent across all of our comments or to rely on the videos. So I'd like to see those minutes revised, as I would have liked to see last week's revised.
So where do we go from here? I think that last time you said that you just didn't have staff to take care of the minutes, or?
No, it's not that we don't have time, staff to take care of the minutes. I mean, certainly there's a prioritization that we need to do in our workloads. This is just a, you know, everybody who puts these minutes together is going to have a different style. We try and make these as consistent as possible. The idea here is that we provide a high-level overview of the statements that were made. You know, certainly, these could be action minutes. You know, public comment was received, the action had deliberations, this action was taken. But I think to Commissioner Mayer's point, that's exactly right. If you want the detail of what was said on any particular item, the intent is that you would go back and watch the video so that you can hear the words specifically. We do not have, you know, a court reporting kind of level of detail on these minutes, and I can't justify asking a staff member to spend their time that way.
I think my comment was to ask for less rather than more.
Certainly, we can do that. If you're not happy with these minutes, it would take a motion, a second, and affirmative voice vote of the majority of you to amend the minutes, however you see fit.
I have a quick question, David. Have we, for years, been doing it this way? I feel like there's, something has changed, and I might just not recall how minutes used to be presented.
We used to do more action-oriented minutes, as I described previously, where, you know, we essentially said, presentation was made, public comment, you know, was taken, the commission deliberated, and this is the action that occurred. We've tried to fill in a little bit more gaps because there is such a high level of interest in this long-range planning project that we're doing, so we're trying to identify where people, you know, put in their points of view, and it gives you a little bit of a, you know, hook to go back and see, is that something that I want to go research further? But certainly, I'd be happy to strike the comments and just note that comment was received, if that's the commission's desire. When this came up last meeting, what I suggested was that if the commission wants to have a more detailed discussion about this and make, you know, formal recommendations for how you want your minutes to be, you know, drafted, we can certainly do that. That would need to be an agendized item. And so I guess maybe now is an appropriate time. Is that some, how you want to spend your time at the next meeting?
I actually don't have a problem with the way the minutes are presented, especially considering that everything's recorded and we can go years back. What is everyone else's opinion?
Agreed.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Can I respond to this? One of the issues with this type of shorthand list of public comments with a very abbreviated sentence about what the comment is about is that it puts staff then in the, in the position of interpreting what that member of the public said. And given that many members of the public speak for three full minutes on more than one topic, there is a danger that staff's interpretation of what was actually said then becomes the definitive public record of what was said that we go back to. And I think there's a danger in that. And so I, I would like to seek some consistency in how our comments are recorded in a way that, that would reduce that possibility. I don't know how members of the public who've spoken up feel about how their comments have been summarized, but I know that I've heard some criticism saying that comments were somewhat misrepresented in the summaries that have gone into some of these minutes. It also seems a little bit strange that we have even that level of detail on comments that are made at meetings without that level of detail also being included for either commissioner comments, staff discussions, or summarizing written comments that may not actually come to us printed out in our packets. But I'd be happy to possibly come back to this at some point during staff-commission communication. I don't know that it needs to be a separately agendized item.
I understand what you're saying, Judith. I get your point. I think it's, I understand what you're saying. I think, given the fact that staff, a variety of staff is doing this job, and most importantly, that there is a video record that anyone can look at if they want to interpret for themselves specifically what someone said and what their inflection was and get a really detailed gist of the whole presentation, I just don't feel like this is the highest priority thing for us to work on right now. I'm fine with this as it is, especially given the video backup, and would like us to move on to other business.
Do we have a motion? Yes, go ahead, yeah.
I agree with what you're saying, just to let you know, but I think it does have to be an agenda, if that's correct, David.
Okay, so how about if we just move forward and then we'll put this on the agenda for next time, Judith? And maybe in the meantime, you can send us some examples. Sounds like what you're asking staff to do is a little bit less work, so that might be a good thing, but I know they're overworked. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I will move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So, and yes, we'll put that on the agenda, Judith. I completely understand what you're saying. I think we all do, so that's good. So let's move on to our first public hearing item. Prior to opening each public hearing, commissioners will provide an ex parte disclosure. So our public hearing item is to consider approval of the Cal Poly bookstore design review permit. Does anyone have an ex parte disclosure? If not, then can we get a staff report, please?
Yes. Okay, so this project is a design review and master sign permit for the Cal Poly bookstore, which is currently in operation right up the road. And the project location is off the Plaza, six ninety-seven Eighth Street, intersection of Eighth and G. And this did come in as a question from a member of the public, so I just wanted to clarify really quickly for the commission. Although this is a Cal Poly site, it's owned by the University Foundation currently. It has not yet transferred ownership to the State of California University System, which is why we are hearing it tonight and why it still remains under our purview. So again, this is the site. This is zooming in a little bit, and this is a photo taken from where that star was located. I took this just about a week ago, right before we had another atmospheric river. So sorry, it's a little bit dark from the weather, but this is an accurate representation of what the structure looks like now with the temporary signage in place. So a little bit of, you know, context for the site. The parcel is within the Plaza Historic District area. There was some question about whether or not the site itself would be considered to have historic merit, and so there is an architectural and historic report included in your packet, and I'll describe that in a moment. But because it is in the Plaza area, it receives a very high level of design review and scrutiny for even minor modifications to the exterior. And the site itself has sort of an interesting history in that it housed a church from about eighteen fifty until about nineteen fifty, which was then moved off-site, and the current structure was then constructed on-site around nineteen fifty-five, and is considered to be in a loose international architectural style. And that structure housed the Bank of America building until just a few years ago, so it had a pretty long run on-site. The proposed scope of work is relatively limited. The largest proposed modification is to increase the fenestration of the existing windows on the west and north boundaries of the site. They also plan to replace the entryway, which is not obvious in this mock-up on this slide, but I'll point it out in a moment. They also are planning to replace the existing signage with permanent signage that pretty closely mirrors what they have up now, although it will be slightly smaller in size, although the banners will be essentially the same. And as a result of conversations with the applicant, we have also conditioned the project to include some landscaping. Currently, the site has no, you know, real permeable surface at all, so it will be moving them closer to compliance but still under the typical standard. So just to kind of run through some of the elevations of the structure, this here, I'm going to try and not blind the commissioners here, but this here is showing the entryway. They will be adding new glass, and that did not show up on the rendering on the previous slide. This is the west-facing wall, and it includes the only signage proposed that will have lit channel letters. The rest of the signage will not be illuminated. And you can kind of see that the north and west property boundaries, Eighth and G, will have the majority of the signage and really will be attempting to grab people in as they walk down the street. So this is the south elevation facing the parking lot, and then a site plan of the site showing where the applicant is proposing to install landscaping with a final landscape and maintenance plan to be submitted at the time of the building permits dismissal. So the architectural report was prepared at request of staff just to ensure we were, you know, crossing our Ts and dotting our Is in terms of whether or not this would be considered a significant resource for its architectural merit. And the report preparer was the architect for the project. His determination was that it is constructed in a loose international style, mid-century style, but it does not really represent, strongly and truly represent, the architectural international style and is therefore not historically significant for its architecture, and that increasing the window transparency will have no real negative impact on the character-defining features of the site or on the architectural character of the Plaza. And we did take this report to the Historic Landmarks Committee, and they supported the findings of the report. So the findings included in your packet basically reinforce the findings of the architectural and historic report, essentially finding that the project will increase the attractiveness of the site and tie it in with other Plaza businesses, including Plaza the Store directly to the north, which has similar windows. Also, that the signage complies with the land use code as condition, which is essentially elimination and maintenance conditions, and that the landscaping that we have discussed with the applicant will bring the site closer into compliance with the citywide standards and more closely match the landscaping to the city parking lot to the north of this site. So we also have prepared an environmental finding for the project. The project qualifies for a Class One exemption for existing facilities with very minor alterations, is not located in an environmentally significant or sensitive area, and does not have the potential to cause substantial adverse change to the significance of a historical resource as supported by the findings in your report. So we recommend that you approve the design review permit and master sign permit with the findings and conditions. I also did want to note that the title of the action references a previous permit and will need to be updated to reflect the Cal Poly ownership, so apologies for that oversight. And we did receive a voicemail comment, which I transcribed, and I passed it out to all of you, and there are copies here, from the owners of the Plaza Shoe Shop, essentially just stating that they supported the project. just stating that they supported the project and thought it would be a benefit for the Plaza and the community. So that is my report. I do not think the applicant is with us tonight, so I'll do my best to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. So I had a quick question. So we didn't get the landscaping plan in here. Where's the trash bin going to go? Was that in there?
I don't think that a trash bin is currently proposed for the site.
All right, does any of the...do you have a question? Go ahead.
I do. What's the blue area that's marked on the plot plan?
I think you're probably referring, yeah, to these sort of slate blue-gray areas. That would be areas where the applicant is proposing to install landscaping within the parking lot area. And there are a couple of drain inlets to the south that they chose to not add, but essentially all of the dead space between the existing parking spaces, they would like to try and add landscaping. And they did recently restripe the site.
And a second question. This is a fairly large parking lot. Is...are there any plans for the parking lot? I mean, it's a lot of space taken up for parking, and not many people park there.
I have noticed as well, yeah, that there don't seem to be that many people who come and utilize the lot, but my understanding is that Cal Poly would like to retain it as is. They just invested in restriping the full lot about six months ago. So as far as I know, they plan to keep it as parking.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Dilo, on that same drawing, there's an island kind of area in that center lane of parking that's still white. Like, yep, that whole scene, especially the larger part towards City Hall from your cursor. Why wouldn't that be landscaped? Do you have any idea?
I do not know, and I'm happy to bring that up with the applicant and see if they can incorporate it.
It just seems like they're so far under, below the code that, like, let's get every bit we can while we can.
I agree, yeah. They are still below the ratio.
In respects to the landscaping, is that a condition of approval component, or...
It is, yes.
And so with that landscaping, can we also include a low-impact development component to it for stormwater runoff in regards of collecting? We're going to be doing, you know, landscaping, we might as well cut some of those curves and direct some stormwater towards that area to infiltrate.
Yeah, I don't think this raises to the level of being a MS4 project where those would be required, but I think we can ask them to work to try and improve that. I was, to that end, Commissioner Figaro, thinking about where their drain inlets are, where they've decided not to put landscaping. I think that'd be a perfect place to put landscaping to help with the, you know, having the solids coming off that parking lot filter before they go, even though it's just a little bit of filtering before they go into the drain. So we can certainly raise that as well.
Yeah, something is better than nothing, that's for sure.
Judith?
Yeah, my understanding is that the landscape plan would not be coming back to the commission, and that that would be something that would then be negotiated between the applicant and staff, and that all we're being asked to do right now is to include that a landscaping plan would be a condition of approval. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. And the intent, you know, was to essentially get planning commission support of including it as a condition. You know, we thought that there was nexus with the findings that you're having to make, but it wasn't included in their original application, and it is an existing non-conforming site. So we mostly wanted to see if that would be something that the commission would like to have us work with the applicant on before they come in with their building permit.
Any other questions from the commissioners before we open this up to public comment? I have a quick weird question. Is the memorial plaque for the Methodist Society going to remain? Did they mention that?
I don't know. They did not mention that, but we could definitely recommend that they would, and I have no indication that they would remove it.
Okay, I just think it's kind of fun. All right, so, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have a question so much, but I would just like to say what I like about this project and what I really like about Cal Poly taking over that old Bank of America space is the way they presented it as an opportunity to increase the connection between university and the downtown sort of area residential Plaza portion of Arcata. I think that, to me, is very appealing, and I think that's a great bridge there. And so to that end, I would love to see that, in that spirit, in some extent or in some fashion, the parking be sort of, maybe agreements could be made with the city or other businesses in off-hours or some such thing. That's a pretty prime location, and I think doing such a thing would be in the same spirit of increasing that connection to the downtown community.
Yeah, I think the, you know, Cal Poly is amenable to entering those types of agreements. Just in conversations with their VP of Operations, they'd mentioned that they had already initiated some discussions with local businesses. You know, that site is already used, you know, on farmer's markets, you know, weekends where we have events. And so I do think they intend to carry that forward. I don't think that it's something that we can put in as a condition of approval, but I think that there is a spirit of partnership there.
Great, thank you.
Along those lines, I did park in there recently for Farmer's Market, and there is a sign that says permit parking, and it made me anxious. Like, is this HSU permit parking? Am I going to get a ticket? The store was closed, I think, when I was there, I'm not sure, but there was a lot of empty spots, but I was very anxious about parking in there.
I did not get a ticket.
I literally did the exact same thing with my mom this past weekend, and we didn't get a ticket either.
Okay, we're going to open this up to public.
One more comment. That, I got to say this, this big parking lot would be a great spot for a solar canopy over the parking. You might suggest that to them.
Okay, we're going to open this to public comment. Any member of the public who would like to comment? You'll have three minutes.
What I don't like about it is the landscaping. I mean, there's no real direction there, and you can't get any uglier than it is right now. It's basically asphalt going up against the building on two sides and concrete, so I would give the university an F in this for their attempt to...if this is their attempt to do something with the community here, it's pretty dismal. I would say, as far as the windows, what are the windows made out of? Are they vinyl windows? Are they metal windows? I mean, that's going to really affect the look of it, you know, from, I mean, vinyl windows might look a little, I don't know, kind of cheap and tacky, or something from the, that time period from the 50s, it's metal that you see. I know, I've seen this sort of style building in Miami, that a window material that's more appropriate would be much better. I mean, they seem to have a lot of money, so I'm just bringing these factors up, and from the standpoint of the parking lot, it's always empty, and, you know, unless you have a permit for Cal Poly, you're not going to park there. So it's sort of like the city lost a premium spot for people to park for businesses, and it's empty. There's usually just one car that looks kind of like graffiti that is permanently parked there, so...and also, we're all paying for this, we're all taxpayers, so it's kind of interesting, the process. I think Danco spent quite a bit of time remodeling the inside, so it's interesting now, they're going to start poking a lot of holes in the building and probably doing a lot of damage to the work that they've done prior. So I'm surprised they went about it in this way. I mean, it just seems like it wasn't very a cost-effective way for taxpayers to be going and having to repair everything that they're doing after they cut holes into the sides of the building, so...and it also brings up the whole issue of the foundation. I mean, that was my question, like, well, why do they even have to get permission for this? I mean, it's the university, they're sort of, I thought, exempt from all this stuff, but I guess it's because it's the foundation. But it also brings up, well, what about the property they bought that you spent a lot of time for, you know, there was the senior housing. Is that foundation, or is that under this, or is that bought by the university? So sort of all these jurisdictions or how that's going to work, or even the Craftsman Mall, is that something that, you know, our inspectors are going out to? Is that owned by the foundation, or is that, you know, by Cal Poly?
Thank you, Gregory.
Good evening, just a few quick notes. I appreciate Commissioner Davies' comments about increasing the interaction between Cal Poly and the downtown zone. Good comments there. Commissioner Lehman, the roof seems like it would be available for solar. It's a big roof there. The question I have about the signage, is the size of the temporary signage permissible by city code? It seems very large and garish to me. And then the permanent signage, is that considered to be in keeping with other signage on the Plaza? Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Do we have anyone online?
No.
No, okay, we'll close the public comment portion, and we're ready for Commissioner Deliberation. I think this is going to look so much better, and it is a big ugly building, and this is going to make it less ugly to me. So does someone want to make a motion potentially? We do need to change the title of the motion, or the action item to take out the Adams Plan Development. And do we want to include the landscaping plan, which I believe is in there? So...
I like this project. I think the building is what it is without totally tearing it down and do something different, which isn't going to happen. I think adding the windows, which will at least let a lot more light in and definitely echo the Plaza right across Plaza Design, right across the corner, right across the street there, on that same corner. I would like to make a motion to approve this project minus the...
Change the title.
Change the title.
What about the landscaping plan? Do we need to say that, or...
It's already in there, I think.
There isn't a plan in your packet, but there is a condition that's in the action that requires them to submit a landscape plan and a maintenance plan at the time of the building permit.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. And were you referring to also the CEQA exemption and the findings as well as approving the...
Yeah, the full packet.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on to our next item, which is...
Can we just take a minute to get set up? Okay.
Yes. So our next item, when it's set up, is going to be consider the community benefits program associated with the Gateway Area Plan. Do we need to get on our computers?
Okay, I guess we don't need as much of a break as I thought we might have needed. I will just open this item by stating that this is a continuation of the workshop item that you had started at your special meeting in November with Heather running that facilitated meeting, and we're going to, you know, continue that work. We do have the PowerPoint presentation from that. We anticipated that you had all gone back and reviewed that material, in particular the new planning commissioners who, you know, weren't at that meeting. And then in addition, we've asked that you bring your materials with you today from the January meeting, the first January meeting, where the summary of the work that you did in November was presented. We were intending at that meeting to take this next step, and so that, those materials are relevant to your activities today. And with that, unless the commissioners have any questions or wish to go over anything in the PowerPoint presentation, I think we'd love to just get started with the activity.
Hello again, everybody. I'm Heather Ikonas, and I'm happy to be back with you and support you to have a conversation about basically how you perceive value of the different draft benefits, and also sort of support you all to be in conversation with one another so you could understand each other's rationale behind how you are ranking. So we're going to do some technical things just to make sure everybody's in the right place, and members of the community that are here can see the screen and do all those things. Were you going to add something to that effect?
We're just going to put that on the screen here.
Great, so we're going to mirror the screen here with the screen here and behind me. And last time we pivoted the chairs so you could, like, be closer, so if you want to move chairs to be closer, please, I welcome you to do so. As a little context, we chose to do it this way using this tool called Mural because we were trying to be as inclusive as possible of people who would want to see what you were working with online. We could have obviously done this with, like, giant Post-it notes in the room, but it felt like people weren't going to be able to see, have the benefit of seeing what you were working with to the same degree that if we use this tool. But the point is not about the tool, the point is really, obviously, to support you all in having conversation about these draft potential benefits. So I thought I would do a little bit of tour guiding about the work that you've already done and queue up the work that we're proposing you do today, and then practice a little bit just to make sure you are able to use the tool of Mural. So first, let me just check, did everybody, did you all successfully log in here in there? Okay, cool. Commissioner Lehman, are you in there too? You're in there, cool. Okay, great. So last time I was with you, we did a couple of things. One, we made spaces for all the commissioners that were on the commission at the time to look at the benefit categories, and we asked, I asked you to rank the categories across a spectrum, a continuum, of ones you saw to be higher value to lower value. And so you did that individual work, and then from there, the ones that you more consistently indicated were of higher value, again, as a category, we worked through, and we then, like, dove into housing creation. That was one of the benefit categories that was consistently ranked higher. And so then we looked at the individual benefits within that category, and I asked the commissioners at that time to please sort of rank the individual benefits across the continuum. And obviously, this is like messy because you all have your own perspectives, and you might not have fully agreed on where things fell out. But the point was not to try to, like, build consensus or agreement about these things, but to just understand your thinking and rationale. So we worked through three categories last time I was with you. That included housing creation, the category of open space, and also the category of transportation and mobility, active movement and other features to minimize car impacts. So those are the ones we worked through, which leaves us a few more to work through today. And so that is where I will zoom in on this agenda here. So we can work through the category of arts and culture, green building, sustainability and resilience, enhanced architectural features and exterior design, building amenities, and then the final category, which was around economic development, job creation, and provision of essential services. of essential services. Last time, I was guessing here, but it felt like last time you also wanted to have public comment after people had the benefit of hearing you and your discussion. And so that was why I had included that as well. And I'll look to you all to see if in fact you do need a break as we did last time. So again, let me just highlight, the point here is to understand for support you all to be, to basically deepen your understanding of how you all see these individual benefits and the relative value of each of them. Okay, and so let me do a quick demo of the tool. So, a couple of things. If you ever find yourself lost in the mural space, completely understandable. One way to find your way around is to click on my icon at the very bottom there. I'm the only one that actually has a picture. And so if you just click on my face there, it will take you to wherever I am on the board. So that's a quick way to get to like wherever we're working. Another way is, did that help? Yeah, no, that's actually what we're doing next. So, really, the only thing that we're going to have to do to get together today in Mural is move Post-it notes. So like, we've already made the Post-it notes, you're just going to move them along the continuum. And so I made you a practice space. So there's Post-, there are Post-it notes in the pink space. You can see the process of moving them to the green space. And I'm also happy to move about if you want me to come check out your, your screen and see if there's anything I can do to help you.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes, thanks.
Yeah, so you're going to be asking us to move the items that you've already got on the list. Is there any provision to add items to that?
I'm going to turn it over to these fine folks as staff.
I believe that we have generated these ideas based on prior work, which is why they're, you know, they're pre-made for you so that you can use those. I certainly think that, you know, the idea here is to, you know, get rankings of, you know, these, these values and outcomes on the table. So if there's something that's missing, I don't see why we couldn't have a discussion about whether to add it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. I just want to check, was there success on moving the Post-its? No. Would you like me to come over there? Because I'm happy to. Yeah. Yes. Thank you. Yes, so there are some, that was the case where the work that you previously did, I locked it down so that way we wouldn't accidentally move things around. And so, but I do believe that all the ones that we're working with should be movable. Here. Click on my face. Yeah. Perfect. So tiny, yes. All right. All right, so I think we're good to go, yeah? Any other challenges at this point? Okay. So the first category we wanted to work through, we're just going to go down the list for ease at this point. And so the first category of benefits we wanted to look at were arts and culture and beautification. And so you will see in this category benefits such as, the first one is benefits guided by Arcata's Strategic Arts Plan, identified projects, contribution to an area-wide beautification fund, blight reduction. So these are the benefits that are currently in this category. You can see the three other ones. So at this point in time, my request of you is to take them and start to move them around as you see fit along that continuum of value. Which ones do you see to be of higher value? Again, and this is just in relationship to one another. So I'll give you moments to do that work and then we'll have a conversation about where things landed. Yes, yep. And if we see things shuffle back and forth wildly, that just indicates we have a juicy conversation to have about those. That is correct. We might end up arm wrestling over them and that's okay. We can make notes where there's difference. Are we okay, or is there a technical issue?
Not a technical issue. If I can make a proposal to my fellow commissioners, if we try to sort of make them all in sequence instead of having them all line up vertically, it'll give us the ability to fight over like, is this first or second, rather than like they're all, because I think what happened last time was they all sort of ended up at one end.
I think there was a recommendation last time to stack for items that held the same value perhaps or something? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean ideally, we're seeing how, how they fall out to you in terms of relative value. And if you all decide they have equal value, then it's, that's where we ended up stacking a bit. Okay. Well, I'm going to check in with you. And again, it's okay if you see things different. That's what we're going to uncover in our conversations together. Yep. All right, well, I'm seeing at least, I didn't see a lot of movement around the blight reduction and adaptive reuse of historic structures. It seemed as though that landed over there under high value and I would love to hear you speak to that. What, like what's the rationale behind that? And that's for anyone.
To me, that is just huge, that I'm glad that everyone agrees that's our number one, the blight reduction and adaptive reuse of historic structures. That's, that's really important and that will go a long ways.
Great. Anyone else want to share rationale? You're thinking about that?
I think it represents just one of the biggest opportunities that we have.
Great. Commissioner Simmons?
I read a paper recently that was about the like greenhouse gas emissions reductions of reusing old structures rather than starting from scratch every time you want to build a new building. So I think it's important to do that when we can.
I think the Creamery Building is a good example of successful adaptive reuse. And I think we're all proud of that.
I'm a little challenged on that one by, you know, is every building that's in the district a historic structure or just those like the Creamery that's super qualify? You know, like Buddy's Mini Storage, do we have to adaptively reuse that building, that whole structure? Or do we get to maybe push it aside and start over? I don't know.
Yes. Thanks for the nuance.
Oh, I was going to say, I think one of the features here is, this implies that we're identifying historic structures rather than just old structures. And part of our definition of blight is old structures that are decrepit. Some of them are worth reusing, others would be best taken down to be replaced by something else. And so I think what's implied in this item is some, some planning around what stays, what we should subsidize for reuse, and what we're willing to let go in favor of other structures and other uses. And so it's a way of safeguarding and, and providing subsidies for creative or constructive reuse while at the same time allowing blight reduction to add some structures to our fund of developable land with new structures. So that, that all, that's all kind of rolled into that packet together. You know, we don't have a redevelopment agency anymore and so this type of activity, it takes the place of some of what a former redevelopment agency might have done.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. So...
I'm sorry, can I just add to that too? That one of the implementation measures in there is to investigate what's called an Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, which is sort of a response to the loss of redevelopment agencies and gives that same sort of tax increment financing jurisdictions. And we'd be able to do a number of different things with those funds. So I just wanted to make sure that you're all aware that that's a possibility out there.
But David, that's not rolled into this particular policy item, is it? That's a separate set of policy items.
I believe that that falls under the infrastructure section, but EIFDs can be used for, enhanced infrastructure financing districts can be used for, you know, a range of different activities, hard infrastructure, gray infrastructure, as well as soft infrastructure. And I think, you know, these kinds of, you know, parks and amenities, you can use some of that funding to help support that. It's another way also that we've talked about, you know, addressing some of the concerns that our public services are going to need, you know, whether it's wastewater treatment, police or fire, you can use funds for those kinds of activities as well.
Does it make sense to add that as an item in this, in this line then, or to just let it go?
Yeah, I don't think so because it's more of an implementation measure under the, the infrastructure section of the Gateway Area Plan.
Great, thank you. Okay, so also further to the right on our value continuum was the benefits that the Strategic Arts Plan had previously identified. Anyone care to speak to that? Is that clear enough? Yeah. Commissioner Mayor?
I'm kind of sorry Delo's left because this, this is her baby. But I think that the entire point of doing that plan was actually to guide those types of investments. We've, we've, we've got an adopted plan on the books that jives really well with this particular item. This is where the city decided to use it. And so rather than reinvent a wheel that might conflict with the plan we've already got, I think we've got a plan that we can take off the shelf and apply to this task.
Thank you. That's great. All right. I would love to dive into these that landed perhaps further down on the continuum. And these were also ones where people probably had different perspectives on where they ended up. So I'd love to hear about, from anybody for whom the contribution to an area-wide beautification fund, why you felt good about where this sort of landed on the continuum, which was in the midpoint relative to the others. And then we'll hear from folks that would have seen it, preferred to see it somewhere else.
I think from my perspective, the, the benefits and the blight reduction kind of covered that broadly and were of higher priority.
Thank you.
I also felt like we've done things like this before where we, and we've had contractors or whoever, developers contribute to a fund and we never really see that come to fruition. So I'm just, that's why I just, I don't believe it, I guess.
So questioning the effectiveness of it.
Yeah, it's a good idea, it's just, I just never see it happen.
Yeah. Commissioner Mayor?
These types of funds are often an excuse for developers to do nothing onsite, pay as you go, don't worry about it. And I think that when we're looking at things that will subsidize particular types of behaviors, the thing that we might not want to subsidize is a payment of, in effect, an impact fee that would then be not tied to the development on that particular site.
So it's a way to externalize some of the benefit or cost? Were you leaning, we'll take Commissioner Simmons and then David, it seemed like you had a comment.
I guess I was looking at it sort of from the other side, which is that there's something nice about a development sort of benefiting like a larger area than just right where it is. And I, I obviously understand everything you're saying as well. There's sort of a push and pull there. But I think for me, that was why I made that one, not at the highest end of this, but higher than some of the other ones, was this idea that I could bring benefits to, you know, their neighbors as, as they were developing.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons.
Yeah, and just real quick, I wanted to point out, we've got examples of in lieu programs, like the parking in lieu program where, you know, we collected money and for developers to not have to put parking on their properties consistent with the code that had a in lieu program. And the redevelopment agency, eventually we stopped collecting funds for those even though we had it on the books because we were, we were not using those funds to build parking lots. We also have in lieu programs like the park in lieu program, which works really well. We take those funds and they actually go directly to, to building out parks and new park projects. And I think to Commissioner Simmons' point, you know, this, this is more on that latter side where it's, it's intended to not allow the developer to not meet the standards on their site. But if you think about these community benefits in the context of how the program works, you meet the onsite standards. And what the Community Benefits Program allows you to do is to, you know, create or fund or, you know, gift through easements to the public, public amenities. And so these, you know, a program like this would, would not be in lieu of doing something else onsite. It would be in addition to the onsite work to help create a public benefit for everyone to enjoy.
Commissioner Mayor?
I think it would very much depend on how the program would be structured. And because what we're proposing here is to identify public benefits that would in effect be subsidizing development decisions that would loosen normal standards for particular sites in order for that type of an approach to make sense. It would really depend on the level of investment required and how that money would be managed and who and how decisions about it would be made. And we have no information about that whatsoever right now. And without that information, it, it is quite difficult to see the value of a don't worry, leave it to us fund.
Thank you. Commissioner Lehman?
David, I'd like to ask, can you give an example or examples of how this beautification fund would actually result in some improvement?
Yeah, I mean, again, you know, as Commissioner Mayor just pointed out, you know, we don't have the details fleshed out. I wouldn't say that it's a just trust us fund. It's a policy level decision. Is this something that we want to emphasize as a part of our community benefits program or not? And if it is, then our implementation measure would be to, you know, develop that program, build it out and, and, you know, publicly vet exactly how that program would be, you know, funded, how it would be, you know, managed and what kinds of projects it would go to. I think when I think of an area-wide beautification fund, that might be something that could go to, you know, making sure that the flower pots hanging off the... making sure that the flower pots hanging off the, you know, the, the light posts are, you know, fresh and tended to all spring and summer longer, whatever, you know, something like that. You know, these, these fun type programs are going to be a lot more difficult for staff to manage than something that's actually built out on the ground. But, you know, I think keeping it in the mix and making sure that there's a possibility for it, in particular because many grant programs require that we have matching funds. And if you have a set aside that's specifically to match for those kinds of projects, then, you know, you're ready to go when the grant opportunity comes forward, as opposed to having to try and, you know, during the, the budget session, say, well, let's take some of these general fund monies that could be used for police or could be used for parks or could be used for, you know, even maybe community development activities and put them into, you know, this beautification fund. That's a different kind of conversation. So I think that was the intent behind putting this forward in the Gateway Area Plan.
Thank you. More conversation about that particular potential benefit? If not, I would love to get perspectives on the final three that are part of this continuum and just hear rationale about why you like where they landed on the continuum of value or where, or if you have a different perspective, what is your perspective rationale about why?
I'll throw out that I'm glad to see Provide for Performance Arts Space way on the left. And it's only because I think of like the gazebo in Eureka, down by the waterfront by the Adorni, that has, I've never seen a show there and it's dilapidated and other things happen there. But not a lot of healthy things happen there. And I just, that outdoor kind of theater setting, I, I don't know that it would completely work around here and not become kind of like the talk of putting a gazebo on the plaza over the years or something. It's like, who's going to hang, you know, what's it going to, how's that really going to interact with our community? The other one on housing for artists and craft workers, the live work thing, I just haven't seen that model fleshed out anywhere in the community in a workable way. And, and I also think about our form-based code concepts as being less restrictive about what's inside the structure and more thoughtful about what the structure looks like to the community and how we interact with it from the outside. So this one would be a really heavy like, well, it had, this has to happen here. And so it seems kind of antithetical to the rest of the kind of form-based code gateway concepts.
Thank you. Others?
Commissioner Mayor? I wonder if we could hear a little bit more about the concept of a community arts trust. You know, we, we have a number of community arts trusts in our region. And so I'm, I'm wondering, is, is that in here? Because someone is proposing a separate gateway community arts trust? Or would it be, you know, a developer's cash contribution to, you know, Inc. people or something like that? I'm not sure exactly what is proposed in that item. And I can't remember the wording of it in the draft plan, except for I seem to recall something about by pocket indigenous control of some fund or, or, or performance space or something. Could we have some more information?
This is where I would usually lean on Delo. David, are you able to speak to that one?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, we don't have a community arts trust developed at this point. So again, I'm going to have to be a little vague on the details. The question is, you know, as a policy level, do we want to, you know, develop that? The Strategic Arts Plan did identify this as a, you know, a possibility for, you know, for, for the gateway or for the future in Arcata. And so we incorporated it in the gateway as, you know, trying to find a way to actually implement that recommendation from the public. So, you know, again, it's, it's, you know, the idea being that we would have ways for projects as they come in to contribute into a fund that would help, you know, artists, you know, have gainful employment in our community.
All right. Any additional comments about where things landed, rationale, or where you have a different perspective from where things landed on the continuum? All right. So we'll scroll out and we'll move on to the next category, benefits category, which is green, building, sustainability, resilience. Let me just do a quick unlock here. Oh, sorry. So there are clearly a lot more of these. And they should all be movable now. So I welcome you to take your time. And this is where it would be great. I know stacking might occur, but the more we can spread across the continuum, I think the richer your conversation would, will be and the more information you're actually giving, or providing to the folks that will be working with this material next.
I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners if they're all right with the adding a posted note, which would be a building with, you know, considerably reduced parking compared to what is, you know, possible or allowed under the code. Parking, you know, creates cars. Cars are leading for some greenhouse gas emissions. So some of our greenest buildings would be buildings without parking. Thank you.
Based, based on what just happened earlier about the possibility of adding stickies and that being just fine, I just made that one for you. It's right there. So, there you go.
Not a lot of low-value stuff in here, huh?
I will end up spreading them apart just a little bit so that way we can read all the text because I will take a screenshot of these. So I want to make sure you all, when you look at it again, and community members can read all of the text.
What is FBC standard? Form-based code?
Form-based code, yes.
I know things still might be in flux. That's okay. We ended up with seven. Oh, that one just snuck away. We ended up with quite a few here under higher value. If we took just the two that ended up furthest to the right here for now, could we hear a few of you speak to the rationale as to why you see that as higher value, community benefit? The publicly accessible landscape features beyond form-based code standard, for example, street trees and green walls. Let's hear about that one. Yeah. Commissioner Mayor?
For the publicly accessible landscape features beyond the form-based code standards, I, I think when we're looking at the form-based code itself, that's in effect, setting a minimum standard for the gateway area. And developers, landowners, obviously then do not get subsidy awards for simply meeting the standards. So this speaks directly to what a benefit that is in effect a subsidy ought to be doing is going beyond the standards that we've already set in the code are valuable and required. So, you know, there again, I guess, you know, the devil would be in the details. What exactly would be rewarded? And somewhere in the code development, we would have to put in some details for that or set up a process to determine that on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
I'd just like to mention some of these landscape features, they're just, they're just overall attractive. And, and, you know, coupling that with, you know, a lot of these components, you know, a green wall, for instance, can be an artistic piece in itself. And it's, you know, definitely segues into what the intent is here, specifically within this district and so forth. So I feel that's why, you know, I, I didn't move it around or anything like that. I left it where it was. So. And then it also falls in line with, you know, stormwater reduction, you know, it has a cooling effect and, you know, so on and so forth, so many other benefits that comes with, you know, these sorts of features.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Lehman?
Yeah, I think, actually, I would switch the, the two bottom ones. I, I think energy-efficient net zero design or carbon negative design, that's crucial. And I, I think passive solar, that, I mean, that, that's important in, in new construction, but it's often not possible, especially with large buildings. So energy-efficient net zero says it all, you know. I think that's a more inclusive kind of statement than saying capture passive solar. Increase thermal insulation, you gotta do that if you're going to be net zero. So I, I think the answer is we want to be net zero. And then these other things follow.
Can we switch them?
Sure.
Doing it now?
Would it make sense to just incorporate the, the one that's moving around now within the net zero rather than switching them back and forth? Since I, I think what you're saying is that in fact, the, it, it's the end that we're seeking and the techniques for achieving it are, are going to vary with particular designs.
Yes.
I've just made that change.
It's, it's an interesting point because I don't know, I think I was listening to NPR or something like that the other day and wherein which, you know, with, with essentially allowing for more sunlight to come into your, your home or your building or so forth in a warming climate, it's, you know, we're spending so much money and so much energy into cooling. So I think it all falls back to the net zero component wherein which, yeah, insulation, all those elements are, you know, just as equally as important or, you know, more important. So.
Fantastic. Hey, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to ask a question about that one. Is sound isolation just, you know, how much you hear your neighbors? It feels like it doesn't go with the rest of them, but maybe I don't know what it is.
Good question. Let's ask the experts. This one here had thermal insulation and sound isolation. Is that referencing, let's make sure our walls?
You know, I'd have to research where that came from. I don't have that off the top of my head.
If I recall, it may have come in sometime after when we were talking about those issues for the emergency generators at the new open door clinic. And we made a big deal about the sound isolation for the generators. And, and somehow I think in our discussions, it might have jumped over into here. So we're, we're looking at sound isolation, especially for equipment noises.
Thank you. Thank you for clarity.
If we all agree that it probably doesn't belong in there, should we just edit it? Seems like a random thing to have on that list.
I think what I would suggest is that it's going to focus on the values or most of the detail of what the land is in there, including that is, I hope, I think it could be included there for a really good reason. We can't tell you which it is right now, so I'd like that. We have to research it for editing the plan.
Yeah, I think there's still, you know, there's mechanical, sound, you know, even if, you know, even if we move towards net zero, which would not include having a diesel generator, I'd assume. You know, there's still mechanical components of fans and belts and all that good stuff. So I'm assuming that's probably the case.
David, do we want to take any public comment at all or we want to wait until the end?
I would suggest you wait till the end.
Okay, so we're going to wait till the end, James, okay?
I'm sorry, we're going to take public comment when we're done with the exercise.
Cool. So I made note about the question, does it belong here and what is that? I would love to just hear more generally, we've got some more further down on the continuum. We don't have to take them one by one, but I wanted to open up the space for you to share rationale about why any of these that I'm currently hovering over landed where they land and why you support why they're there. Yeah. Commissioner, figure?
I'll say something about the technology to limit wastewater discharge to the city sewer. You know, it's, it's been on the mind of everybody and everybody in the community and in which way we can, you know, limit loads to our wastewater treatment facility to, you know, encourage its continual use into, you know, a longer future outside of, you know, potential sea level rise issues, you know, may benefit us, you know, really considering using, you know, reusing gray water, you know, sinks above toilets, you know, Japanese style, to reuse that gray water or, you know, using gray water for, for watering, you know, vegetation that's planted, you know, as a, an improvement. I think that's a really good point and something that we should consider.
I agree. I was surprised that it wasn't further to the right, that particular one, considering the problems that we have here in Arcata.
Yeah. And so this is the time, so you would have seen it further over to the right in terms of value. That's great. Thank you. Others, yeah. Commissioner Lehman?
I'm the one that added EV charging under Solum microgrid development. And frankly, I think EV charging is more important. We, I, I totally agree with the idea that the buildings should have significantly reduced parking. We need to get people out of their cars. But they do, we will need cars for a long time, but they should be electric. And in order to, to make it easy for people to have electric cars and we have to have charging. And it needs to be public charging because you can't have your own garage charging if you live in a four or six-story apartment.
Right. Commissioner Mayor?
With regard to buildings with significantly reduced parking, I think the gateway plan as a whole already refers to significantly reduced parking and that the transportation and mobility sections go, go into that as far as standards for development go. And so if your standard is already zero, And so if your standard is already zero or close to it, I'm not sure how you would incorporate a subsidy community benefit with significantly reduced parking because that's already gonna be part of the basic standard. So I'm not sure it belongs on this list, but we do have it on our other lists. And it is incorporated in the proposals for standards that we already have.
So I haven't prepared to go through the exact language of the plan, but my understanding is that there are provisions that envision parking. And so I guess I was thinking in places where you could have parking under the code, it would be nice for someone to build a building with no parking and that that would be, you know, a benefit and a increased, like, it's more than they had to do under the code, although I'm happy to talk about what we're requiring as a baseline and a minimum.
Okay, I guess one of the concerns I have with putting it in here is that the use of the community benefits program would be, among other things, to allow for buildings to be bigger, higher and bulkier than they would be otherwise. So if you are allowing for buildings to be bigger, higher and bulkier and then rewarding that with reduced parking beyond that, I think some people might say that you're actually compounding a potential problem. And that allowing the buildings to be bigger, higher and bulkier is in itself the reward and that there's no point in further rewarding nothing with, you know, with nothing. So I'm just not sure necessarily is something that's going to add to our eco grooviness stated in quite that way in this location.
And I did want to just highlight, you don't have to build agreements tonight, but the point was to really surface where there might be difference or different perspectives. So that's, it's okay that we don't, like, reach consensus on should it be in or shouldn't be out. Did you have additional content? Okay. Anything more about these potential benefits that sort of ended up towards the higher end of the value spectrum?
Could I say something about the emergency off grid electrical access? This again is something that came out of that open door plan, I think, and is in other locations around our region linked to some microgrids. The value in a power outage, for example, or the value from the perspective of equity to providing members of the public with emergency electricity is phenomenally enormous. And if that's something that a developer who wouldn't normally do it could decide to do because they're gonna be rewarded for it, that's actually an appropriate use of our benefit program. It is indeed a very public benefit that an investor, a developer, a landowner might otherwise choose not to extend to the public. And this may, including it here at a high level, may be what flips the developer's mind to say, hey, yeah, that sounds like a great idea. We can do that. And then we'll have some of our emergency needs taken care of that might not otherwise be.
Nice. Commissioner Lehman?
I'll just point out that the solar microgrid development does provide emergency power during a power outage, so they're really the same.
And Peter, the solar microgrid makes sense in this kind of a development, is that true?
It doesn't necessarily have to be solar, but that certainly is, I mean, the greener the better. But having battery storage, which could provide power during an outage, that's what you're after.
Regarding the provision of emergency off grid access, I think, I feel like if it's an affordable housing project, it should just be required, period. I mean, it just should be required rather than a benefit. Yeah. Commissioner?
Yeah, can I make a comment in respects to, yeah, just what Peter's just stating in regards of the microgrid, not just limiting ourselves to solar, but also to wind as well, considering how windy it is here, since we're building a wind farm off our coast. So, you know, including it, you know, if we're building tall structures, we can mount things on top of structures to spin and create energy. So maybe including other passive forms of collecting.
Okay.
Yeah. Energy.
I don't want to rain on your parade, but the wind resource here in the Arcata area is poor. So a wind turbine in the Gateway area would not be a good idea. Offshore, it's incredible, but here in the Arcata area, it's not worth it. Solar is the way to go.
Is it isolated, is that, is it, is there an altitudal, you know, is it relative to floor or, you know, when we're at 75 feet in the air? You know what I mean? These sorts of things?
It's not a good idea. It's not a good idea in this area.
I would also offer to refocus on what's there.
We could talk offline.
Exactly. I'm sensing a geek out session, which is very cool. So if you look at these potential benefits that ended up in this portion of the spectrum, I'm gonna zoom out just so again to give us our relative value, right, of these. Anything you want to say about any of these five potential benefits? Credit for highest levels of sustainable design onsite, we, actually, Commissioner Figueroa spoke to the stormwater remediation of toxic contamination, et cetera. Anything you want to say about these?
I just want to get some clarification on what does remediation of toxic contamination above cost compensated by government programs? Does that just mean we're, I know there's brown, so is it providing a trust or a fund or what are we doing here?
No, I think the idea behind this was that you don't limit onsite your, you know, you're committing to cleaning up the sites. You know, I'll just be frank and tell you that this is kind of one of the weaker community benefits that I think is in the program because if you're gonna redevelop a site, you're gonna have to clean it up to, you know, whatever the level that is required to produce that kind of development, whatever the development is.
Yeah.
And you're gonna be paying whatever it costs. If you get government subsidies for that, fantastic. But if you're gonna develop it, you have to pay whatever it costs, so.
Yeah.
This is a little bit of fluff.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering about that. I'm like, it's up to the Regional Water Quality Control Board on that one, so.
I think one of the reasons that got in there is a speediness of work type of thing. If you wait until government programs pay for cleanups, you may be waiting for 20 or 30 years. Look at Little Lakes, right down the street here. If there's a developer who wants to invest their own money to do it now so that they can redevelop the site now, I think that's what this was referring to.
Yeah, and I think if the, you know, Commissioner wants to recommend keeping that in there, I mean, there's nothing necessarily wrong with it, so.
All right. Well, can we make that clearer? Can we rephrase that? Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that that last box on the left, if you're building a net zero building, you're gonna have up to date, most modern energy control systems already. So that's kind of subsumed in that box that we had on the far right.
So my experience with LEED buildings is anecdotal, and I'm curious if other commissioners have experience with them, but I have heard that often, you know, it's affordable and cost effective to get like 80 or 85% of the way to the cutoff where you win LEED gold or LEED platinum. And then that last five or 10% becomes cost prohibitive and very difficult. And so I don't know if we want to tie our city's standard to that standard, although I'm, again, just basing this off of a couple of examples I have heard about or been told about. And so I'm also curious if other folks have thoughts on it.
Again, I want to remind the commissioners that these would be community benefits, so it wouldn't be a standard, it wouldn't be a requirement that they meet that LEED certification. And I think elsewhere in the document, it actually says to meet the standards of LEED but not necessarily be certified because then the certification process is, again, another, you know, cost. And what you get is a gold star to hang on your building. It doesn't actually create any additional energy efficiency, so.
Cool.
I don't have any input on that. Thanks for asking.
All right. So I just want to check, is there anything else anyone wants to share about rationale for the way things ended up along that continuum or places where you were really out of alignment with where things ended up? So we can understand your rationale and thinking. Okay, so choice point for you. We just worked through two of the benefits categories. We've got three more to go. Do you want to keep moving ahead? Do you want a five minute break? Tell me what you would like. Keep going. Keep going, we're okay? Okay. So, let me do this really quick. We are going to work on the enhanced architectural features and exterior design section. If you click on my face, you will end up in that portion of the board. And away you go. I welcome you to move things around. We'll hear your rationale once they land. These have generally, there's a little bit of jockeying for exact positioning across them, but you've certainly ended up with some more towards the right and some more towards the left. Let's hear about them. Anyone care to share your thinking about, in particular, this one is moving off the continuum around having interesting and attractive articulated roof lines besides balconies, et cetera. Yes, Dave?
Yeah, I think this is the one that's gonna be most important to most people in Arcata as far as visually being able to connect with the expansion of the Gateway project and see in it a reflection of the town that we already are in.
Thanks. Others? Commissioner Lehman?
I think underground utilities, if everything could be undergrounded, it would make for a very attractive neighborhood.
Thank you. Wasn't there a problem with the cost of that, though? I almost feel like that needs to come off here because it sounds like we're never gonna be able to afford to do that in Arcata, right? Or will we?
We do have, we have a couple of underground districts. We've been collecting money into the funds to do additional undergrounding and we've got one area done. Don't ask me where these areas are because I won't be able to tell you. But I know they're in and around the downtown. And we have funds to do another one, so they, you know, it's slow plotting work to try and gather the funds together to do them. If we were to require individual projects to do, you know, significant undergrounding, it would probably be cost prohibitive. So there is a little bit of a balance there. We were in one of the, because I, you know, I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Lehman that it's more attractive to have these facilities underground. And then in one of our public meetings, a public member pointed out that, you know, it would increase the price of that housing significantly to do that. And that may not be the best way to spend public funds or private funds.
Commissioner Figueroa?
I think one of the reasons that I had suggested this in the first place is that it is appropriate for our benefits program. It's beyond what would be required. It's what we want to see and we're willing to give developers a little bit of leeway in other aspects of their designs in order to achieve it. So it is an expensive thing that the city itself might not necessarily be able to require or fund, but that developers should definitely be rewarded if they're willing to pay for it themselves. It's not saying they have to do it, although I'd love to have all new construction in the Gateway be required to contribute to undergrounding, at least put on a schedule for when it's gonna happen. If that's not feasible, this is the next best thing.
Thanks. We had a comment up here and then it'll come over to you.
Yeah, I was just wondering, this is specific to each and every individual project, right? And so it's not necessary for the overall, you know, for the overall district or area, right? So naturally, you know, why wouldn't we be undergrounding things if it's new construction? You know, granted, if it goes outside the parcel, that's something that's different and it's an encroachment and so forth, but for a new construction, for a new building, why wouldn't there be underground utilities? You know, it's pretty standard nowadays. You don't have wires hanging out in the air anymore and so forth, you know, other than, you know, running from a transformer over to the top, you know, of a building, why don't we just run it underground? So it's specific to a project, not to the area, right?
I guess the really short answer is if this is something that's of high value to the commission, you should keep it on here and we can sort out the details in the future. It does add significant cost to underground, to a project, on a project by project basis.
Is the sorrel building completely underground?
It is. And it also had millions of dollars in subsidy. Tens of millions of dollars in subsidy.
We have Commissioner Simmons.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, my understanding is the developer's gonna get sort of a menu of options that they're gonna choose from. And so I don't think there's any harm in leaving it as an option on there. And if no developer can afford to do it, it doesn't happen, unfortunately, because we all agree it would be nice. But it's, there's, we don't have to decide now for the developer whether or not it's cost prohibitive. They can, yeah.
I agree with that and I also want to remind the commission that, you know, as a follow on step to this, once we've gotten the list of prioritized community benefits, we also will need to go through a process of, you know, vetting through what's, you know, cost feasible. As we structure these programs, they're gonna be, you know, required that they take some community benefits. And so we want to make sure that the collection of community benefits that we package together to ensure that we get a diversity of different types of benefits and not just the lowest cost benefit over and over and over again, is still feasible for projects to build. So that's sort of a follow on step to this. So I agree, like, put your dream list together right now and we'll worry about how realistic it is later.
Great. So I've zoomed in on this next set and I welcome, if anybody wants to share any rationale as to why any of these six landed where they landed.
For the sanity of the residents, I think the
For the sanity of the residents, I think this rooftop concept is absolutely wonderful. Especially that they'll all probably have very reduced outdoor access, you know, patios or whatever you call them, balconies. You know, I think of Brooklyn and visiting the rooftop scene as being so critical to each unit, like, oh, we got this rooftop, oh, let's go up there. And it's just such the getaway. So I like to think that this could happen.
Thank you. Others? About any of these six benefits?
I was looking at the pedestrian sheltering. So I'm just thinking, walking, you know, you're walking through Arcata, walking to downtown, you get soaking wet. And it's, you know, it'd be nice to have some shelter from that. And I think that would be really important. Make it easier for those of us who walk to get around. And the rooftop, I know it's super expensive to have the rooftop open spaces, I've been told. But man, would that be nice. That'd be really nice.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. And I did want to just ask too, based on where things landed, is anybody in a position where you're like, wow, that landed in a place where I really don't align? That doesn't make sense to me. So we can hear also your rationale for any difference that you have. About where any of these landed?
I would hate to condition our projects too much on the has-to-be-native landscape. I know this doesn't completely say that. But as much as I love native landscaping, it is limited. And if we're really, you know, looking for certain applications, it might not always fit. We want a really green landscape that's abundant, and that might not be what grows locally.
Thank you. Anyone else? Points of difference from what you're seeing here? Okay. Two more to go, categories, that is. And checking in, still okay to continue forward or a five-minute break? Keep going. Powering. All right. All right, here we come. So you can start to scan what is in the category of building amenities, the structural and operational features that enhance a resident's quality of life. Unlocking these. There you go.
Can I add what I thought sound isolation was? Like, not being able to hear your neighbors built into the building as an internal benefit for residents?
I believe so. I see some things moving. Are they working for you? Was there a tug of war? I missed it. All right, there's still some movement. Let's give it another minute. We've actually got some spread on this one. All right. So what seemed pretty solid in terms of benefit was the one all the way to the right. First-floor storefronts occupied by businesses that support residents' basic needs, such as grocers, clothing stores, medical services. Anyone care to speak to that? Yeah. Commissioner Davies?
I mean, the part of the chief appeal of this whole area would be walkability. And to make that more viable, having these very kinds of support businesses in the building just seems obvious.
Yeah. Great.
Could I ask a question, though? Isn't this something that was actually proposed as being a basic standard in the Gateway code? So it seems like it would be redundant then to have it listed as a community benefit, especially when landlords would also be collecting rent for these things, for the most part? In effect, what you're saying is probably if you've put stores and stuff like that on your first floor, you get to build higher. And they're already going to have that as their minimum standard in the commercial areas already. So do we want to add that additional subsidy to the landlord above and beyond?
I was thinking that same thing. Judith?
Yeah, I think this, Commissioner Beister Davies was asking me to weigh in. I think this is, you know, sort of at the crux of some of the comments that we've received around not having some of these actually reflect benefits, because they're the purpose of the plan. And so we definitely are, you know, desiring to have mixed-use projects in this area. In this early stage, it may be seen as financially infeasible. And there might be certain key areas where we want to ensure that there's, you know, some commercial on the ground floor, for instance, in the K Street area. And so incentivizing that and making sure that we get, you know, some mixed-use buildings out of this, in particular, early on, you know, is the concept behind having that as a community benefit. There's also a community benefit listed in the general table that, you know, identifies rapid production of housing as a community benefit, to which some people had balked and said, you know, the whole purpose is to make housing. So why would you make that a community benefit? And the answer is because if we are serious about wanting to address, you know, housing now and to have this plan actually stimulate housing, then one of the ways that you can do that is by incentivizing someone who wants to bring housing to you. And it's not that you couldn't, you know, change these benefits over time and say, okay, we've had enough of this as a community benefit, and now we're going to retract that. It's only available to, you know, the first, you know, 200 units or whatever the case may be. And so this may be a, you know, situation where, you know, you could put a time limit on it. But the idea is that, you know, you may have a market that's really driving towards residential construction. And at the same time, if we lose the capacity for commercial uses in this area, then it's gone. Now, one of the ways that we've sought to address that is by requiring standards that create buildings that could be used for commercial purposes, even if you plan to use them for residential purposes, so they could be converted in the future. So certainly, you know, to the commission's discretion, whether to keep that on, keep it off. You've been pretty laissez-faire so far as, you know, just keeping things in.
I actually, now I kind of agree with you. I think that, um, people, I think developers will want to build residential, and they won't be as interested in commercial. So maybe you're right, that that could, should, maybe we do need an incentive to create residential.
Got it? Or you guess?
Also, just something that differentiates us from just general commercial is that it says, you know, things that provide basic needs, like grocers, right? And so it's not necessarily just going to be like, you know, a toy store. Or, I don't know, it's hard to think of something that people don't like. But I like the idea of it being like corner stores and medical services and basic needs, getting a community benefit beyond just any kind of commercial being built on the first floor.
Yeah, I agree. It's definitely added value. You know, in regards of having a community and then having, you know, associated businesses that are within reach and not over there, but down there. Like a pizza shop or whatever, liquor store, whatever it may be, you know? It definitely incentivizes me as walking rather than driving. So, yeah, I like that. And, yeah, likely, in this instance, and once this gets off the ground, people are going to want to build housing. And to create an opportunity for, you know, for those that want to provide this space, you know, there's a benefit for it.
I think Commissioner Tegney?
Yeah. Two things. One is in our Form-Based Code discussions, we care more about what happened, what the building looks like and how it interacts with the public rather than what's going on inside of the spaces. So I'm a little confused about suddenly saying, well, if you build this in that space, you know, you get benefits out of it. It feels, the other part of my thoughts on this is that it feels like the market systems are going to dictate whether or not there's an exercise gym and a little store and things like that. I super hope they're all down there. I just don't know how we codify it in this situation, you know? Does it just have to happen by market forces? Or, I mean, we can overbuild retail. We know that. We've heard that around Planning Commission for a long time. When, you know, if there always has to be retail on the first floor, there's a lot of empty retail already. So, I don't know. It's a tough one. It's a tough balance.
Yeah. But can we create space where in which it can be easily converted to living? You know, I mean, it's happening in the city where we're converting commercial buildings to residential, you know, apartments and so forth. So I think, you know, we can play with that.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yeah, to this list of sort of basic amenities for basic commercial spaces, I think we should add childcare, which is missing.
Childcare?
Yeah.
I do think that's coming up on the next category, too. I believe childcare is in there. So hang on to that. If it's not, we'll come, we can certainly add it. I did just want to check, are we good enough for now on the building amenities? Anyone have anything else they want to share about it?
I just wanted to say something also about the free Wi-Fi and internet access. That, again, is an internal thing. There's no street-facing value to that. There are communities that actually require all-new construction to include broadband access. I actually moved here from one of them. And that may be something that we should consider for the Gateway as a whole. But it is something that perhaps doesn't belong in a Form-Based code. It has no implication whatsoever for building form.
Thank you for offering that difference. Okay. So with that, I'm gathering we want to power through and do this last piece. And that last benefit category is around economic development, job creation, provision of essential services. Each of these are unlocked. And I just want to make sure I did not misspeak. I swear, oh, yes, there is. So one of the benefits that you'll see in that category is purpose-built spaces for children's daycare and services for seniors. So that is where that showed up. Welcoming you to move them about.
Can someone tell us what "commercial uses that accommodate delivery vehicles off-street" means?
It means delivery in back alleys or on the side. Remember, we have this issue of blocking traffic and potentially reduce-capacity streets. And so if you have businesses and services that need deliveries, you don't want those deliveries to block traffic.
Like the co-op of the loading dock in the back.
Is there something in here that talks about hiring local labor? Where? And labor in construction? Labor is the most important to me. I wish that was the other way around.
Me too. I think that's really important.
Yeah, hire local. Should be a big, that's a big benefit to me.
I just made a note about that. Can this be reordered? So labor is listed first. Clearly, some things landed further to the right. I welcome you to share rationale about why you put things where you put them. We just heard, uh, local labor is critical for at least a couple of you.
Yeah, those are really good paying jobs. I like the purpose-built space for children's daycare services and for seniors. Just even having a space, so if there was the demand for it, actually have a place for them to be, that would be very convenient, especially downtown for working families.
Thank you. Others?
I also like the non-chain. It's funny, whenever any family visits from out of town, they love that we have all of our local shops. It's really special.
Great. Commissioner Lehman?
I'd say that sometimes it might be difficult or, and/or expensive to have locally sourced materials. But local labor, we can almost always use that. So I don't think they're equally important.
Yeah, it might be useful to pull those two apart.
Cool. Making the note right there. What else? Anything anyone wants to contribute? Either sharing rationale for why things ended up where they are, or if you see things differently from where they ended up. Now's a good time to share your thinking.
This commercial uses, the delivery vehicle thing, it feels like that's how the streets are going to be set up by Form-Based Code or by traffic engineering or something. I don't quite see how that would be a community benefit.
Thank you.
Like, the whole block or neighborhood should be set up so that deliveries happen in the back, you know? And that means there's streets or alleys, and that's bigger than one project.
So should that be mandatory then and not a benefit?
Is that envisioned, David, in Form-Based Code for a street?
It is not currently. You know, I think that this is something that I'd love to have the city engineer come and talk with you and potentially our... and talk with you and potentially our, um, you know, get some input from our, um, consultant team, you know, to weigh in on what happens if you make those requirements. Cause my first thought is if you require that there be, you know, those kinds of access points on the backs of every project or every, you know, development, you're basically not quite doubling, but you know, maybe one-thirding the number of roads that you need so that you can segregate out traffic for delivery from, you know, other traffic types. And so, uh, you know, it's an important land use decision to, to make.
Um, wouldn't that same access be utilized for emergency services?
Yeah, I mean, it could soak in the street.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the, uh, yeah, so, you know, I'll try and bring something back a little more cogent for you to, to think through. Uh, that's, you know, got some, some backing from our, our traffic consultants.
Commissioner Mayor?
While, while you're at it, um, we had also asked for, um, some realistic proposals for an alternative to the L-K, um, duo, including, um, possible changes to K Street. And it, it's kind of part of the same picture if we're going to have one moving lane of traffic on a street, um, and we allow on-street deliveries, we're basically blocking movement on that street for deliveries. And I think that was the origin of this item.
Thanks.
Yeah, either biking or, yeah, traffic or bike or ped traffic as well, because where do you go?
Okay. Anything else about this, how things fell out in this category around economic development, job creation, provision of essential services? Okay, good work. As I did last time, I will lock this down so, you know, uh, things don't get moved about inadvertently. And then, um, we made PDF versions, like basically screenshots of all these. They were included in the notes and, um, and they were also posted online as well. So that's the follow-up that I will be doing with your good work. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Heather.
Oh, we need to take public comment. Do we have any members of the public who would like to comment on? Please step forward.
Hello, I've got a hodgepodge of items here. On the parking, um, you remember what Steve Strombeck said, that, uh, there may be a parking requirement of zero, but he will only have, he'll have a minimum of one, one parking spot per unit because that's what his experience is that people want. And, uh, as he said, his secretaries would quit from the complaints. But what can be done is, uh, do parking, recognize that probably in 20 years, the parking requirements are going to be less. Get the developers to put the parking lots, uh, combined in a space so that they can be built, used as building space in the future. The, uh, we've learned from Chris Dart, Dan Coe President, that it's not likely there's going to be buildings taller than five stories, more, more likely four. So the, the question is, what is the goal here? It's, it's, uh, you know, months ago, we thought that it would result in taller buildings. I think now it's not. It, it is going to result in streamlined approval. I have a letter here that I'll pass out. It's from Commissioner Mayor, um, about, uh, she says, uh, "It seems backwards to me to create any definitive list of items that developers could offer before the planning commission has had substantive discussion on the streamlining process and to identify the types of ministerial review." We know that there are at least three types of ministerial review. So I'll pass this out. I've highlighted some, some of the lines that she said. The, um, oh, oh, so sure, sorry. Well, I'll do it after I talk. The, "I regard this process as really complicated." When we look at Redwood City and how they've done things, they divide things up into large projects, small projects, historic projects. For them, large projects are over three stories or 30,000 square feet. Correspond for us would be over two stories or 10,000 square feet or so. The question is, wh- what are you going to do for ministerial review? Because that's what we're talking about here. Possibly a standing subcommittee of the planning commission to evaluate objectively these amenities and how they will work. There's a purpose-built daycare. I'll remind the commission, there's no schools proposed in the gateway plan, even though there could be thousands of people there. Emergency power is generally sized, you, you can speak up on this, Commissioner Lehman, but it's generally sized for the needs of the person who, who has it, not, not excess. But again, what is the goal? What are you trying to achieve? What's going to happen with these amenities? And if, if other than just zoning administrator streamline process, which I am distinctly against, I think that as Redwood City showed, um, if the form-based code is done properly, things get passed in an hour. Okay? So there's no, there's nothing like the Village Project. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
I mean, all of these ideas are good things, but is it based in the economic reality of what's happening here in Humboldt right now? I mean, that's the question. So I'd say the same thing. What's the goal? Is affordable housing our goal? And if it is, um, how much, do we have like 50% of it that we want as affordable housing? As we learned from Dan Coe, if that's the case, it has to be highly subsidized. And they said that that's pretty competitive too, to get that subsidies for these projects. So, um, if you're looking to go over four stories, it's not going to be affordable, which are you saying that maybe 50% of the housing stock, stock is going to go to more wealthy people from outside the area? Because if you go over that, that, uh, five stories, that's what we're talking about. So there's going to be hardly anybody in Humboldt County that's going to be able to afford those units. Maybe somebody over at administration at Cal Poly that's six figures and other folks like that, but you're, they're not going to be living there. I, I mean, I brought this up too, from the standpoint, when you have people living there, where are they working, you know? It's kind of, uh, where are the jobs for these folks? When I talk to young people in town, I mean, they're basically just trying to afford rent. So I don't see them being able, those shops that are below those, those buildings paying those folks enough money that they're going to be able to afford to live in those units unless it's a Dan Coe project, then they could. So, um, as far as the transportation, I, I'm totally into public transportation, but I, I see where we live here as, especially with jobs too, that, uh, it's not going to be that convenient for people to try to use public transportation to get to work wherever that job is. Since there's, doesn't seem to be a lot of, um, industry in these, in the gateway project as far as employing people. When I use our local airline and go down to Burbank, I use, I try to use the public transportation there. And, you know, I'm probably the only one trying to get from Burbank to, uh, North Hollywood Station to use the subway station from LA to get to downtown. And then when I get to downtown, I use the metro to let's say go to Santa Monica. And then I see the kind of development we're talking about here where high rises from five to seven, and they allow that right along the metro lines. But if you look beyond that into all those neighborhoods and all those cities, it dramatically drops down to, you know, no more than three stories. So a lot of these, uh, questions that we're talking about, you know, throughout this last year, uh, we already have a track record in California, we have a track record in the United States. So perhaps we should try to learn from all that. And that's why I, uh, gave you that article from last night. Thanks.
Thank you, Gregory. Do we have anyone online?
We do have a couple.
Go ahead, uh, number ending in three, six, seven, eight.
Good evening, commissioners. It's Jennifer Colt with Humboldt Baykeeper. Um, I, I just, um, I, I missed the beginning of the, um, discussion, so I'm not sure if this is just sort of a free-form brainstorm you're starting with here or what, but, um, I wanted to comment on the sticky note on the toxic site, um, cleanup idea, which, you know, I appreciate the sentiment, but I, I just want to point out that a private property owner is not eligible for government subsidies for cleaning up contamination. Uh, you have to, the land has to be owned by a tribe, a nonprofit, or a government entity to be eligible for cleanup grants from the US EPA. Um, and then similarly, I'm not totally sure about the idea of gray water and zero discharge toilets in apartment buildings, how that would be technologically possible. Great idea, but I just don't know that it's particularly realistic. So I just wanted to weigh in on those things and, and maybe, you know, um, focus on the more realistic ideas that you're coming up with. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is anyone else?
Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening. Nice to see you again. I want to make a couple of points. As I've said before, amenities are only relevant if you're building over four stories. And, um, that we really haven't addressed Fire District issues that have been raised. And they're basically saying until we get five million more a year from someone, maybe it's coming from the state, we, we really can have tremendous liability if we build more than four stories. So the amenities are relevant unless we're going to build more than four stories. And we're all acting as if it's going to happen, um, but I think it should be taken into account. And we still haven't addressed sea level rise. And I wonder when you're going to get around to having the joint session with the, um, Planning Commission and City Council on sea level rise, bringing in experts, not only such as Alarion Laird, but from HS, uh, from Cal Poly-Humboldt, their Sea Level Rise Institute, and other pertinent people on appropriate soils as to what's feasible in the, uh, Barrow District in particular and in the coastal zone. And I don't know whether we have actually addressed the coastal zone issues appropriately or effectively. I also want to point out the issues of ministerial review and that on page 70 of the plan, it talks about streamlined, uh, review. And that of course would be an amenity. There are three levels. You haven't yet made a decision about what should be in each of those levels and which are preferred and under what circumstances those levels would be applicable. Do you go to Planning Commission? Do you have everything be zoning commissioner, which would be David? Or do you have the intermediate one? Or do you have everything like over some cities over three stories? It goes to the planning commission to do the evaluations, the whether it meets our objective standards. So I think we really need to make a priority in, uh, decision-making about what kind of ministerial review we wish for our city, because I think it's a critical issue. Ah, that's all I have for the moment. I didn't have time to prepare, uh, written comments. So I will be doing that in the future. But I would really like to see you schedule the sea level rise, um, and soils discussion. Um, because without that, that could be another kicker, just like the Fire Department, Fire District Department. And today they're having the hearing of the Board of Trustees for, uh, the state to determine, I believe, whether they accept the EIR. We'll find out tomorrow, I presume, or soon, is whether that's been accepted. But I know the Fire District was attempting to get them to reissue the EIR before they start building on the Crasman Mall property, which is going to be six and seven stories.
Thank you.
And we need to understand our degree of liability.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you.
Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, good evening. Just really briefly, I'd like to speak for the birds. We are right next to the marsh. And I think that a community benefit being bird safety glass is extremely important. If we get buildings that are going to make us unhappy, because they're going to be taller than what many of us want, it's going to make us even more unhappy if we see bird strikes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri.
Uh, that's it for online.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, um, any questions from commissioners before we move on?
Yeah, David, can someone from staff respond to or give us some clarity or updates? I know we've, um, talked a lot about, and there've been questions this evening about the sea level rise, and I know staff's working on that and focused on it. Can you give us a, an update on when that is coming before us?
Yeah, absolutely. And I was going to bring this up under correspondence, but it is, I think, relevant now based on the couple of comments we had. So, um, as you recall from the work that you did late last year, to kind of identify all the issues and identify what your priorities were for moving forward, how you were going to address those dating back to the August 23rd study session with the City Council, sea level rise was one of the areas where you felt confident that we had, um, uh, you know, sufficient, uh, information in the record to identify the pathway that we were going, but you also identified that there's a real need to, to explore, uh, you know, current science and also to share that information with the public. And so you asked us to, uh, to pull together a panel of experts to, to talk with you all. I've been working with the NOAA Fisheries, um, to, um, talk, uh, to find a sea level rise expert that can come and talk to us, uh, in, as part of a panel. I've been talking with the State California Coastal Commission, uh, similarly to send a representative. Um, and then I'm going to pull together, uh, one or two experts from, you know, our local area. Uh, we have a lot of expertise in this area, uh, beyond what most areas have, I think, just because of our unique geology, uh, hydrology, and then also the connection with the university and, and, um, those kinds of factors. And so we're uniquely positioned, uh, with, um, many resources that many communities don't have, and I'd love to be able to share that with you all as well. At this point, I don't have a date, uh, settled, because I'm still trying to coordinate with the schedules of these agencies, uh, and entities that we're reaching out to. Uh, but my goal is to bring that to your second meeting in March as a panel discussion, so that, uh, you can hear from other experts.
I'm very encouraged to hear that. And, um, wondering, um, panel discussion, like partly Zoom, partly in person?
I'm hoping to have everyone in person, but we'll have to see. Some folks may come in remote. And, you know, I, I don't want to promise too much on the format. We're still sort of working through that, but it'll be more of a panel, panel discussions, short presentation, panel discussion, Q and A from the planning commission, um, so that you can really dig into, uh, questions that you have. Thank you.
Peter, do you have a question?
Uh, no, I just want to make a comment. I, I think we all got an email that had a link to a NOAA website to, um, visualize, uh, sea level rise, and it's a really good website. I recommend it.
Yeah, if you, uh, Google NOAA, N-O-A-A, and sea level rise, it'll be the top hit. And it's got a, um, graphical representation. You can zoom into anywhere in the state, anywhere in the states, I believe. Um, you can, um, see what different levels of sea level rise would be. And it bases, it, uh, it uses a basis of, um, you know, feet in elevation over, uh, base here. So it's not, it's not getting into, you know, probabilities of when that condition would be, would exist, but, um, what would happen if that condition existed?
It, it did, uh, give a, a table of probabilities based on various models about the possibility of occurrence.
One of the things that's most interesting about that website is how much sea level rise you can get before there's any inundation into the proposed gateway area. It's counterintuitive, given the elevations. Even at 10 feet, there's very little inundation in the gateway area. So that, that was a good resource.
Okay, so we have one more business item. Shall we power through or does anyone need a break?
We have five minutes.
Okay, we are taking a five-minute break.
Uh, is that assuming that? Uh is that assuming that?
Welcome back, and we are going to move on to our second business item, which is the land use and growth management element update. Um since it's so late at night, we're just going to take a staff report, um ask a couple of questions, open it to the public, and then we'll come back to this at our next meeting. So do we have a staff report, David?
Yeah, and I'm going to be exceedingly brief uh because of the reasons that you mentioned. Um I do want to orient you to the materials. This was on your uh your agenda last time. We didn't get a chance to get to it. Um we've stacked these agendas to make sure that you you have the materials available to you. And as you recall, we're um releasing these documents when we feel like they're ready for public review. So they're in your packet tonight. Um and we can pick up a more substantive discussion at your next meeting on these items. Um Attachment A is the revised growth management element, um and Attachment B is the revised land use element. Um I think that these uh particular elements uh are really significant to uh, you know, honing our vision for the future for growth and development. And we've made some uh pretty substantial changes uh that I want to want you to pay close attention to. Mostly what we've done in the growth management element is to update um with uh recent state law. So if you look on packet page fifty, for example, you'll see a whole body of text that was input to uh comport with state law. Uh we've also refined some of our policies around annexation to be consistent with uh with state law. Um but this section, the growth management element, really lays out the vision for uh how the city plans to grow and develop over time. In general, growth management elephants, ele- elephants, elements, I knew I was going to do it at least once. Growth management elements are um designed to describe the process for the city expanding its boundaries. Uh what we've done both in the two thousand general plan and in this general plan is to really uh hone in on the idea that we will grow through infill development. Moving on quickly to the land use element, uh again, we've done pretty significant changes to uh land use element in terms of uh the types of uh ways that we've described. We've tried to be a little bit more consistent and explicit about the way we're describing uh how we would use these different areas that have been identified as uh either neighborhoods or or planning areas to satisfy our future growth. Um I like the table, or I'm sorry, the pie chart on pa- page sixty-two really shows you how much of Arcata is uh involved in either agriculture or forest lands, a little more than half. By acreage, yes. Um and then uh I wanted to draw your attention to packet page sixty-four, which discusses the infill opportunity zones. Uh those were the zones that were identified in our housing element uh in this last cycle to uh emphasize higher density development in and around certain activity areas. Uh the land use map has several changes. Uh I encourage you to look at it in online so that you can really zoom into and identify the the changes that have been made um or that have been proposed for being made. They haven't been made yet. Um but these, many of these come from uh various discussions that we've had over the past year or two. Some of these are involved in the local coastal program update and changes that we've uh discussed with that process. Uh many of these changes are changes that have been identified through uh the CERT planning work that we've been doing, the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program planning work that we've been doing. Um and there are a few new changes on there that I wanted to uh make sure that we could draw your attention to. And so please study that map, and we'll go into those changes in a lot more detail when we have more time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
What page was that?
Uh that's Attachment B, and you'll see that on-
All the maps.
Yeah, packet page ninety-four.
Ninety-four?
Yep.
Uh I have one small question, if the chair doesn't mind. Um page fifty, it shows urban service boundary um less than the city limit boundary, and I wonder if that actually exists in the city of Arcata.
Yeah, it absolutely does. We have areas within the city limits that are not served by urban services, uh primarily uh south of about uh Front Street.
Where's that?
Uh that's uh that's a really small street between uh uh F and G. Um just where the um, if you if you take F all the way down to the end, and then it curves to G. Um every- everything south of that uh and east of the developments that are on South uh G Street are, is outside the urban services boundary. Um so that, you know, the idea being that we wouldn't provide services to those lands to facilitate growth.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Um first, given that we've um had this on the agenda now twice, and we haven't gotten around to discussing with it, is there um a means that you would recommend for getting you our detailed comments or questions? Um you know, I prepared this for last time. I prepared it again for this time. Um we get to go home and eat dinner instead of talking about it, which of course is wonderful, but on the other hand, um it would be great to know that all that preparation is going to be used for something. So do you have any recommendation for how we can get those detailed comments into the hopper?
Yeah, absolutely. If you want to uh send them to me and include them in the packet, I'm happy to do that. If you'd rather roll them out at the the meeting where we have more discussion about this.
Okay, there are quite a few of them. Um so I'm not sure that getting them in the packet as a whole would work, but um certainly some some lists might be something that we can bring up at the meeting. Is that possible?
I'm sorry, bring up lists at the meeting?
Uh yeah, some major comments um to bring up at the meeting rather rather than a-
Sure, if you want to do it that way, that's that's fine. Um I think we are going to have a discussion on this uh at our next meeting.
Okay, that's of course what we heard last time, so I'm not really confident at this point, unless it's the major item on our agenda um and comes first on our agenda rather than last, which I would highly recommend.
Yeah, I mean, certainly we're, you know, prioritizing the the agendas to make sure that we complete the work. Tonight, we had Heather Equinos, uh you know, with us, and so it was important to have her go first. Um but-
Okay, and and then the the second thing is more of a substantive thing so that perhaps you could explain it next time or possibly this time. Um there there are a bunch of things in the land use section that are not identical with the previous version, but don't necessarily reflect um actual density types of things that come with the changes in the ADU laws that are going to then affect our zoning possibly or possibly not because they haven't really been mentioned here. Um or the um possibility of subdividing single-family um zoning sites so that in fact we're actually going to be looking at potentially two parcels rather than one. Um there wasn't really anything mentioned in the um policy section about the implications of those things. Have they come in someplace else in our draft plan that's not here?
Uh let me, I'm not sure I followed you. Let me try and reiterate what I think I heard you saying.
I I guess what I'm concerned about is is we have some new language with regard to um our various residential zones in particular, but it doesn't specifically reflect these major policy changes that um we know are going to then affect our our actual densities in zoning. Uh is that something that we can discuss in the context of these policies? Or do you expect to put those off until we actually talk about the land use code?
No, I think that's uh, you know, absolutely something you could talk about in these policies.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I had a quick, well, I have a, I'm glad this is coming back because this was a lot to go over. Um I just have a really quick question. Under the land use classifications on page seventy-seven, it looks like the residential very low and the residential low densities are the same as our current code, but it looks like in here, the residential medium is going from fifteen units per acre up to twenty-five units per acre, and the residential high is going from thirty to fifty from what our current is. What was, did we talk about that? What's the reason for that? Is that? We did talk about it? We didn't? Okay, yeah, I have a lot of things. I want to, I'm glad this is coming back, and we're all too tired to do anything right now. So does anybody have any? Well, I I should open it up to the public. Do you have any members of the public that want to talk about this? Is this going to be continued? We're going to talk about it? Okay.
Um uh David, can, could you please put in writing what's the purple, blue, red, green, and yellow highlight? I, you know, there's different colors used, and I don't know what the colors represent. Um is that somewhere? Okay. Um and I request um uh to minimize the acronyms, uh sphere of influence is spelled out, and then it's changed to SOI. I'd vastly prefer to minimize the acronyms, and I hear this from the community also, that the more technical something is, the less likely they're going to read it. The uh our, if the commissioners don't know this, and I'll remind the public who's listening, uh it's all available online without the strike-throughs in a in a clean copy, which is much easier to read. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I actually like the strike-throughs because I like to know what's been changed. Oh, we do have someone online?
We do have someone online. Go ahead, Jane.
I'd just like to basically indicate I agree with Judith Meyer that we absolutely need to deal with the uh ADUs, with the potential of, I mean, the state laws that now mandate that you uh have to allow uh single lot owners, if the lot is appropriate, to build a second unit, and those in turn can build two more. Each can have an ADU, which means you can end up with four units on a single lot. So I think that should be discussed, and that needs to be a part of this plan and taken into account um in terms of areas where that may be uh feasible, more feasible than others, because there are areas where the lots are not available. In other words, the the elevations that down, in the forested areas, you can't necessarily do this because they're natural areas behind the homes. But there are many areas where this may be feasible, and I think it'd be very interesting. Uh I know we've talked about the ADUs in the past, and you've given a number to it, like we had ten this last year, and you anticipate a certain percentage coming forward in the future. That should be part of this discussion. So I'd love to see us have that happen. And I really do think we need to address the minist- the streamlined or ministerial review. That's on page seventy. I think that's new in there, and we need to um define that a whole lot better and understand what we're talking about and what our options are. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you're doing. It's a lot of work.
Thank you, Jane.
Uh that's all for online.
Okay. So are we ready to move on to correspondence and communications? Do you have any correspondence or communication?
I do have just a few things. Um the uh form-based code uh work that we'd identified as a priority for the planning commission the end of last year was approved by the city council is now underway. We're under contract uh to to do the expanded engagement and have additional um support for developing that form-based code. Uh we had a um uh public meeting to try and capture some of the the public input on form-based code uh a couple of days ago, and we'll be bringing that to the city coun- I'm sorry, to the planning commission on February eleventh in a workshop, Saturday workshop for you. Um the form-based code was recorded. Um it's uh- a workshop, Saturday workshop for you. The Form Based Code was recorded. It's on our website now, or will be by the end of day tomorrow, and there are, there's a survey associated with that. So if you missed the Form Based Code workshop, you can still attend the meeting virtually, listening to the YouTube video, and then answering the survey. So I wanted to let folks know about that. You can find all of that on our website. If you Google Arcata and SIRP for Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program, you'll find it. Second item, I have updates to the Arcata Municipal Code that have been adopted over the last year here for you. I'll hand those out to you at the end of the meeting. You can incorporate those into your paper copy if you have one, or tell me you don't have one and don't want this, and I will keep it. The item that was raised earlier about the Gateway Plan, the items that were not incorporated, because the comments were incongruent with the policy that was drafted, so that the policymakers could see changes that were made that were consistent with the existing Gateway Area Plan and track changes format inside the plan, and that has already been released, and the comments that were excluded, but that we still want to carry those forward so the decision makers and the public can see them. That table, we were intending to bring forward actually at this meeting as a specific agenda item associated with this, you know, the items on this agenda. Everything got pushed, so what we are going to do is to release that onto our CERT webpage in the next couple of days, and so it'll be available to the public. People can take a look at it, and we'll bring that back for the commission to review in conjunction with some other agenda items associated with the Gateway Area Plan, so you can start to look at what was excluded. And I want to emphasize that that was just excluded from the current draft of the plan. You all, the City Council, are the ones that ultimately decide what gets included in the ultimate plan. And then my last item, I'd already discussed, the scheduling of sea level rise panel for March. That's all I have at the staff level.
Okay.
David, are we supposed to bring this packet back again, then?
Yes, thank you for reminding me of that. Bring this packet back. Keep it with you so we don't have to print it again.
Great.
Can I ask a question about these community workshops where three of us attended the last time, and that was almost in violation of the Brown Act? So should we go? Should we not go? Should we choose who goes?
Yeah, I will, I will send you an email. Nancy Diamond, our city attorney, is going to review the email before I send it, and I'll provide you some more in-depth guidance on that. If a quorum or more shows up to a meeting that is reviewing the subject matter that you are also reviewing as your body, then it's a Brown Act violation. And so had a fourth person showed up, yes, I would ask them not to join. I don't want to go into too much detail because I want to make sure that what I'm saying to you is consistent with what the city attorney would say to you, but there are some, you know, protocols that I think you should take into consideration before deciding to attend a meeting like that, and I'll share those with you via email.
Should we just not attend?
Again, I'll send you an email that'll outline, you know, formal city position. I'm going to address the question that I already know you have in your head, Fred. Yes, we will post it on our website.
Quickly, because we're tired. David's talking about elephants.
The city attorney, but my interpretation is that if you're attending the meeting, you're not engaging, you're not speaking, you're not interacting. It's a different situation, so we'll find out. So hopefully everyone can attend but not engage. And then we were in the breakout rooms, so there are even fewer of us. So, but we'll find out. Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, there's nothing else. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.